We will convene the regular Board of Education open session meeting at 7:07. All right, Mr. Wong, would you lead us in to pledge allegiance?
Please stand.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let it show that all board members are present, staff is present. I thought Mr. Buchanan, there he is. And our student rep from Canyon Oaks Mountain Park is here. Hi, Ellen. On the closed session today, we discussed some items that are under negotiation with the bargaining unit, and no action was taken. We tabled the education, or the study session that's discussing our strategic planning, and we'll take that up at the end of our regular business meeting. Is there any change to the order of business tonight? No change? Then I would accept a motion to approve the minutes of January 14th.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Marikanda, would you please take the vote?
Board member Wong?
Yes.
Board member Zuko?
Abstain.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Williams?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero with one abstention.
All right, moving on to board member reports.
I have one.
Yes.
It's not quite in memory, but I was reading the LA Times and saw this article of a hospital nurse who passed away, and she had had some trouble with one of the hospitals she worked at. She found a baby on this counter that had been left after it had passed away, but it hadn't passed away. And so there was a big issue with, you know, she was very upset, this baby was left there just as trash. And the hospital fired her, and I don't know why I turned to the article, it's not one I would have normally read, but in the end, it mentioned that she had actually worked for Monrovia Unified School District in the 90s, and she had served the children of our school district. And I, I kind of liked that, that she would go out of her way and lose her job over a little baby that was left for nothing. But her name was Cheryl Pease, and she worked here, I believe it said in the mid 90s, but I don't know if I'm going to make it to the end of the meetings, that's why I did it now. That's all I have for board on.
Mr. Williams?
Mr. Gilliland, I'd like to congratulate the Monrovia Duarte Black Alumni Association in conjunction with the school district and the Monrovia Historical Museum, as well as KGM, and continuing the tradition of celebrating Black History Month. The national theme for 2015, I understand, is a century of black life, history, and culture. This was adopted by Ms. Eloise Hart, president of the Black Alumni Association, who was a great friend of mine, and her efforts was to reach every classroom in Monrovia K-212. This effort include art festival, movie night, storytelling. All this was led by program coordinator Mrs. Joni Yule, who I happen to have a lot of respect for. I think she did an outstanding role with her leadership and her team. I'm also excited, Ms. Yule, about the Buffalo Soldiers and the horses are coming to the Monrovia School District on the 24th, and there are so many events on the schedule, which I understand that Mr. Patrick Garcia will articulate. But I was also last Saturday present to witness the art award winners from each of the elementary schools. And again, Ms. Yule, you were excellent in your staff, in your articulation of the history of the people of African descent, Americans that is. I also brought the winners, which there were so many, but Brad Oakes had winners, Mayflower, Monroe, and Plymouth. The kids were excited. I was trying to get the picture, Patrick, I was hoping you brought a picture of the group picture that we took, that Mr. Yule took on our behalf. Again, I'd like to thank the Monrovia Duarte Alumni Association and its active involvement for over 15 years in this community. I was just totally excited, board members representing the board there, with so many paintings all around the room. My wife was there to witness some of theirs too, but I commend you, Ms. Joni Yule, in your efforts to share the history of Americans who happened to be of African descent in the history of Monrovia. I was at the Historical Museum, I saw a lot of old Monrovia uniforms. I, you know, I've been here for only 26 years, I didn't know it was green and gold in the past. And so I saw some of that gear as I was there to witness along with Ms. Yule and others. There was a presentation that was based on the history, and it was just so emotional. She was so passionate, I can't even think of her name, but Patrick, I hope you can revisit that individual. But just kudos to the entire effort of the Black Alumni Association, and that's just my report by the president.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I want to echo what Mr. Williams said about the wonderful committee that's put together so many activities for this, this month, and we're going to hear some report on what's going on. Some of us, most of us, were fortunate to be at the city council meeting last week where they made that presentation. We were there to present the Golden Apple for the Healing Connections Award, but we got to hear what's going on in all of Monrovia for Black History Month, and it's a great program. So many things that you guys have put together in the schools, and that was a great presentation. We're looking forward to a great presentation tonight. I also want to commend the Monroe staff. I was able to attend their open house last night. I would say for the members of this community that are watching, if you've been interested in, in visiting some of our school sites, this is open house season. If you visit our website, you can find when the open house for our different schools are, and you're certainly welcome to come to our open house and see what's going on at some of our schools this year. The Monroe staff did a great job, and the parents turnout, the turnout was amazing. Cafeteria was overpacked, so it was a great, great evening and a great opportunity for parents and folks to see what's going on at Monroe. Also, want to mention the Monrovia Chamber of Commerce Awards. One of our own board members was recognized by the chamber this month for his contribution, and Mr. Hammond, congratulations on that recognition. He was awarded, he was given the Military Service and Stewardship Award, so yeah, let's give him a hand. Also, another very familiar person to this chamber is Pam Fitzpatrick from the Bell Makers in Cattywampus. She comes and helps the chamber present awards almost every month, just happens this isn't the month, but for our classified and certificated staff of the year, and we so appreciate her. She was given the IRIS Award for volunteerism in the, in the community. Also, Ron Ross from Wendy's was given the Monroe Award, and they're such great partners with the school, want to, want to echo what the chambers said, the good things that were said about Ron and Wendy's. And Dick Lord Award went to Jason Landis from Pride Lending, and New Member Award was to Seco's Auto Service. And these businesses and those folks present such great services to the community, we add our commendation to all those folks as award winners this year. All right, that's my report. Our student rep, Alex, we're happy to have you with us tonight.
Thank you. This month, Canyon Oaks and Outon Park students have been prepping for the KC exams, especially the sophomores, because this is their first time taking it. The teachers and administration always work hard to create career pathways to give us better opportunities to further our education and give us higher education opportunities and skills that will transfer into immediate jobs into the future. On the athletics front, Canyon Oaks finished second in the San Gabriel Valley Small Schools Basketball League, but we lost our last game by one basket. We're looking forward to softball season. It's an exciting time for our schools also because students are learning or hearing back from the universities they have applied to. I'll give a further, further report next time on the schools that our graduating class has been accepted to. And that concludes my report.
And I understand the softball season started well today with the win over Al Hamra, so that's good.
Yes.
Thank you so much. And if you need to leave to study or whatever, feel free to go, Alex. All right, moving on to the item 3.3, report from the superintendent.
Thank you, President Gilliland, members of the board. I do want to mention a grant that Susan Hirsch, one of our principals at Quest, has been able to secure for us. It's a partnership with the city of Duarte and the city of Monrovia to help students in terms of project safe neighborhoods and promoting safe neighborhoods. So we'll learn more about that in the coming weeks. And I also want to recognize Brianna Dominguez, who is the CIF Southern Section Champion in girls wrestling, and that is extraordinary, a whopping 106 pounds from Monrovia High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Throsian. Item 3.4 is public comment for items not on the agenda. The board encourages public participates, participation and invite you to share your views on school business. Please complete the addressing the board sheet if you would like to address us and, and give it to Ms. Marikanda. If you haven't, in order to accomplish the board business, limited to 30 minutes, probably not an issue tonight, but I have to say that. Would you tell us who's submitted cards so far, Ms. Marikanda?
Yes, Mr. President, we have a request to speak from Nicole Avila and Alex Correa.
All right. Yes, if you would, please go to the microphone, and please speak into the microphone as much as you can, because it's not picked up very well by KGM unless you speak into the microphone. So if that doesn't, if that mic doesn't work, we'll adjust, but...
Okay.
Did someone turn it on?
Yeah, it's, it's on, I think. Okay. So hello, everyone, my name is Nicole Avila, and this is Alex Correa, and we attend Monrovia High School. We have some pretty exciting news because, you know, we want to share this with the entire community, because that's been our really big focus as a team from Monrovia High School, is to get robotics into the community. So we actually have an invitation for you, and it's to attend our regionals, which is actually being held at our wonderful high school, Monrovia High School, on Valentine's Day. Should we pass these out, or?
Please.
Yeah, okay, she's going to pass them out. So what's really interesting about this is that there are now five teams from Monrovia High School competing in this regional, and that's kind of a big deal, because you have to make it past qualifier, which is where you compete with robots. And so our, for, all of our teams actually made it on to compete in this regional, so every team from Monrovia High School will be competing. So that's really exciting, because that's, this is, this is the most teams that we've ever had. We first started with one robot, and it literally, it couldn't even do most of the challenges, but it was like really awesome, and they were so proud of it, just this little robot. And now we have teams that have won so many awards, it's, it's really awesome to see how far we've come.
What time is the competition, is it all day?
It's all day long, but you do not have to be there all day long. It would just be really cool if you could just come and cheer us on for a couple of hours.
And is the science expo going on at the same time?
Yes.
Okay.
So that's really interesting, too.
So this Saturday, if people are interested at all in robotics, or even just seeing the high school, they should come to our gymnasium, and it's amazing to watch these teams compete.
Now, what team are you guys on?
We are from red, actually. Yeah.
You're wearing red?
Yeah.
Okay.
You may have heard of us, because we actually created a small robotics program for the Boys and Girls Club, and we've also done some community outreach, like kind of getting our name out there, and we've done movie nights, and we had a booth at the street fair, so, but it was in the library, so we worked with the YMCA, and we also helped with their high-risk kids program.
So would you mind telling them what red stands for? I saw your, your stand and workspace, and then I looked at them, said, "That's great."
It stands for Robotics Engineering Division.
Great.
Yeah. And we were actually going to bring our robot today, but something that first teaches us, which is the, the organization that we build robots under, I guess, is that to expect the unexpected, so that's what we're expecting today.
Thank you so much, and we've now got the flyer, and we will have some in the lobby. If you will leave some with us, we'll have them out here.
Yes, we have a bunch.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, Ms. Marikanda.
Those are the only requests, that is the only request we've had to speak.
All right, thank you. We'll move on to public comments for item on the open session agenda. Comments may be made at this point in time, at the time the item is considered and is placed on the agenda. Is there a speaker card, Ms. Marikanda?
No, there are not.
Then we'll move on to item 4.0, the consent agenda. I will take a motion to pass the consent agenda.
Move consent.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Marikanda, would you please take the vote?
Board member Williams?
Yes.
Board member Hammond?
Yes.
Board member Wong?
Yes.
Board member Zuko?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries five zero.
Great, we'll move on to item 6.4, public review of recommended math textbooks. Dr. Kaiser?
Yes, as you recall, last year, the math teams came in and presented to you the need for a decision on integrated versus the traditional math pathway. And the decision was to enter into the, the integrated math pathway that's aligned to the common core. Along with that, there's a need for new textbooks next year to be able to teach that effectively and efficiently. And so we'll have on display the California Integrated Math 1 by Hooten Mifflin, Math 2, and Math 3, that's course 1, 2, and 3, and the Precalculus 5th Edition Pearson, which would be, meet the requirements for teaching integrated, and then that will be up for approval, barring approval for the next board meeting.
So we're actually going to get done what was discussed last year about the integration with this. Any discussion, any questions for Dr. Kaiser?
Now, the, the display of the books is only done here. Do we ever entertain the idea of getting a second set to put at the school, these, because...
We haven't done that.
Okay.
We can explore that.
Could we? I think that, like, the people that are going to use them, that, we don't get a lot of traffic here.
Yes.
And we get a lot of traffic at the high school, and if they're going to read them there.
Yes, I'll, I'll explore the possibility of getting a second set. We'll do that right away.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more discussion? All right, then, moving on, moving on to item 6.8, Mr. Garcia, I understand you're going to present our, kick off the presentation.
Doing great.
I'm really honored to be here tonight to talk to you about the great partnership that we've had with the Monrovia Duarte Black Alumni Association, and I've got a PowerPoint presentation all set for you that we're just trying to get queued up here. Perfect. Okay, as I said, I am delighted to be here tonight to talk to you about this partnership. There we go. I have known many of the people in this particular organization for many, many years, because I was, many years ago, some of their children's teachers, as well as having worked with them on many community projects over the year. But, but the great thing about this is that this really gives our kids an opportunity to enjoy the enrichment and the educational opportunities that working with this organization has helped us to provide. Uh-oh. What happened? Did we lose the signal, Jason? What? Sorry. I don't know what happened.
Have we ever had a meeting in which we didn't have that?
Well, it's itself. Okay. Okay, there we go. Okay, so just a little bit of an overview, I wanted to share with you that this particular project was something that we decided to do, obviously for the month of February for Black History Month, but the exciting piece about this is that we provided lesson plans to all of the teachers, so that back in January, they could begin to start getting ready for this. And so this picture here was actually hanging at the art display. This was actually Mr. Pies's class, second grade at Monroe, and I thought it turned out pretty great. This was our flyer for the project, and this is our second annual arts festival, and the funny thing is, we've already scheduled the third annual for next year, so mark your calendars. 2016, it's going to be the third weekend in February. And here's some of the student art. And as I mentioned, we had students participating at all five elementary schools, and ribbons were given out, blue, red, and white ribbons for grade levels and at each school site. We had over 700 pieces of student art on display, and that part was very exciting, and so I'd like to take just a moment to thank all of our really talented students that participated, as well as our dedicated teachers for all of their hard work. This was a really great project and a great opportunity for our kids. And if you'd like to see the art, it's hanging at the community center, yes, for the next week or so, and then the work will be returned back to the students. And, you know, there really is no other community like Monrovia. What other community do you get so many amazing people to show up? If you just take a look at this picture, we've got the mayor standing there, we've got city council, we've got board members, we've got parents, we've got principals, we've got teachers, and those are two Monroe students who are receiving their recognition that afternoon. So it's, it's pretty exciting that we had that kind of a turnout of folks. In addition to the arts festival, the MDBAA will also be providing storytelling and read-alouds in all classrooms at the elementary level, as well as CELC this month. And additionally, at the middle schools, we wanted to do something different at each level. The middle schools will be offering two movie nights. We're going to be screening Ruby Bridges at Clifton, sorry, at Santa Fe on February 19th at 6:30 PM. And at Clifton, we'll be screening The Rosa Parks Story on February 26th at 6:00 PM. And as always, these are free to the public and open to the community. At Monrovia High School, we've got the new Buffalo Soldiers coming, and I'm sure that most of you know this, but the Buffalo Soldiers were originally members of the All African-American US 10th Cavalry Regiment for the US Army, formed back in September of 1866. And so the new Buffalo Soldiers will be coming in third and fourth period at Monrovia High School to do an assembly for us to talk about the impact that these Buffalo Soldiers had on the war. And at lunchtime, they are bringing their horses out, and they will be on display, not inside the theater, but outside, outside just north of the theater between the 200 building and the Taylor Performing Arts Center, the horses will be available at lunchtime. So just quickly, I wanted to kind of spiral back to the practical vision, which I shared with you last August, when we were talking about the five-year strategic plan for the arts. And if you just quickly look at this, we are definitely hitting on the points that we talked about wanting to hit on when we set this up, you know, with doing programs like this. If you look at this list, you see the word "community," you see the word "student celebrations" and "student work," and we are, we are certainly hitting our mark with those, with projects like this. And finally, I want to recognize this amazing group of folks, there were certainly more people involved, but this is Joni Yule here, this is her husband James, this is Betty, and this is Sharon, and they were all incredibly involved in this last project. Sharon was the chair of the arts festival, Joni was the person that coordinated sort of all of the aspects, and someone that I've had a lot of interactions with, and have certainly enjoyed doing this with all of you. I just, I want you to know that I, that I hope that we get to do many, many more of these over the years, and it's been my extreme pleasure to work with them. So thank you very much, that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Mr. Williams?
Mr. Gilliland, Ms. Yule, would you mind stepping to the podium and articulating what I know of you with regards to efforts? Thank you, Patrick.
Yeah, of course.
Good evening, school board. My name is Joni Yule, and with great pleasure, I'm here this evening, representing the Monrovia Duarte Black Alumni Association. This is a project that is close to every single member's heart, because we get a chance together as one community to celebrate American history through the eyes of people who've contributed so much to this country. Because of education, and all the things that are on our plates as educators, I too am an educator, there's so many things that we have to cover, there's just not enough time in the day to do it. And it is with great pleasure that the Monrovia Duarte Black Alumni Association is providing a service that frees up our teachers. We'll come in and share this aspect of American life to the students, the youth here in this community. Our vision is this, that there's all kinds of crazy things going out, going on in the world, but we're hopefully, by them experiencing the richness of African-American culture and its history, we're providing them with a shield against the negative, so that when there's a negative thing that's being said or talked about of a person of color who's different, they'll have an experience that's positive to counter that. So it's their shield to bounce those things away, because they've had experiences with people from all walks of life, all cultures, all religious backgrounds. We're not finished. This is just the beginning of the month. We've got so much left to come, as Patrick talked about. We want the families to come out to, to movie night. Bring your kids there. Let's talk about the stories of Ruby Bridges, Rosa Parks, that those things will never happen again in our hearts and our minds and our souls. Let's come together and see the Buffalo Soldiers for our high school students, to again enrich what great Americans there are, and how every person in this country has fought for freedom for us. And that's what this is, a wonderful, huge celebration. Now, we have one more thing we haven't talked about, and that is can't happen without collaboration. Can't happen as one single entity. It has to be the school district, because it reaches our kids, from the littlest ones to the oldest ones that we have, that you're responsible for. Our city, because after they leave our schools, they walk the streets of Monrovia. So our city has to be aware. Our city is actually, if they go to after-school programs, do you know that the after-school programs are connecting black history to their programs after school, their activities that they're doing? So all this month, they're being exposed to that at school, in the cities, on the playground? I think no place can that happen but Monrovia. I've been here forever, old as this dirt, and my kids have gone here, and my grandchildren are here, because this is a good place to be. Now, I want you to make sure you have your calendars open, because February the 22nd, at 2:00 PM, we have something specifically for adults, we didn't leave you out. And that is our luncheon, that talks about and brings in the other aspect of the Monrovia Duarte Black Alumni Association, and it's kind of directly related to you guys, too. Why? Because it is a fundraiser for our scholarships, in which the Monrovia Duarte Black Alumni Association provides scholarships for students going on to higher education. We've got two fabulous speakers this year. We have choirs, and we have all kinds of entertainment, but our speakers are, one, Hope Demetrius, who is the lady who's bringing the exhibit to the art museum, Art Monrovia Historical Museum, about abolitionists. Fabulous, I was there Sunday. There's nothing better. And then the second person is Dr. Wilma Kazimzade, and she is the former vice president of Spelman University, an African, a woman of African descent, who is going to talk about the... of Spelman University, a woman of African descent, who is going to talk about this notion of oneness and how we've gone from slavery to working as one. We're really excited. You want tickets? Fine, Joanie, $10, but it goes to Monrovia and Doherty students and their scholarships. Enjoy. Come enjoy with us. And the last thing I'm going to say, because my husband always talks about me being long-winded, and I know he's huffing and pluffing over there, is this, there's just no words to thank Patrick Garcia and the Monrovia Unified School District for allowing us to serve you in this capacity. Just let us know what you need, what the students need, and we're here to serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanie. While you're up there, could you possibly just look into the camera? And if somebody out there watching wants to get to this luncheon, which sounds like a fantastic event, how do they get ahold of you or how do they get tickets for that?
Okay, the luncheon is the 22nd, 2:00, at the Monrovia Community Center, and you just post an old email to Joanie, J-O-Y-U-I-L-L-E@AOL.com. $10 a person, and make your reservation. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanie. And if I could get the rest of the members of the association up here. We've got a certificate here because you guys do so much work, and you're right, it's a collaborative effort. And without the work you guys do, our students would be missing out on so many things because you guys work hard, they get some experiences, and they get some history that we couldn't provide without you guys. So, we want to give you just a little token of appreciation for what you do, and then we'll gather up here and take a photo with the board, but we want to say thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's get up here and have a picture.
All right, all right.
You know, Joanie has to be down front.
Oh, of course.
It's like Zuko has to be out front.
You know, and I'm using the word. Thank you so much.
All right, thanks a lot, man. Thanks a lot. Thank you. Thank you, man. Thank you. Yeah, yeah, I'll probably stay like this. Yeah, we get the graduation and everything in front. Man, look at how many get sent out.
Thank you.
One, two, smile. There it is.
Hey, thank you. Thank you so much.
I do, good thing Joanie won't find heels.
All right, at this time, we're going to excuse Ms. Zuko. All right. We'll move on to item 7.4, the 2015-16 Preliminary Budget Report. Ms. Wu.
Good evening, board. Last month, the governor released the 15-16 stated preliminary budget, and for public education and K-12, we received a lot of good news. And overall, this is a very good budget for the public education, and actually, this is probably one of the best compared with past several years, and here's the reason why. And the governor proposed increased funding for the early childhood education, this including fund the 1.58% quota, which has suspended in the past several years. He also opened 404-day preschool slot, so this is additional $33.6 million statewide. For the local control funding formula, he is not only increased the quota compared with current year and from the 0.85 to 1.58, he also increased the gap funding. Current year, our gap funding is 29.15%, but next year, he proposed will be 32.15%. So, I listed the two programs to bring the board into attention, yes, there are some changes in this two program, and I will discuss more detail, which is adult education and the regional occupation center program, we normally call ROP. So, under the local control funding formula, with the quota and the proposed 32.19% of the gap funding and generated, for Monrovia, generated 1.3 million dollars. However, part of, almost, most, part of the 1.5 million dollars is generated by the students who are fit in three category, which is full reduced male, English learner, and forced use, and the district, the district is required to provide more service to those students. And also, as a part of LCFF funding formula, and each year, as far as district receive the gap funding increase, we are required to gradually decrease class size from the kindergarten to the grade three levels, so, which mean to us that there's potential increase of the staffing from this kindergarten, and we can spend to TK because the TK transitional kindergarten now is combined with the kindergarten because the state changed their birthday for the kids can be enrolled into the district. And on the other hand, that the state is also propose to one-time discretionary money, which mean that funding the school for the old mandated cost, and that one-time money propose is $180 per ADA, and for us is over $1 million. And then, the state will allow district to use that funding for continued implementation of common core purpose, such as the textbook adoption. So, most likely, we will follow that guideline. The other things on the expenditure side, and the school district, like us, who received the state facility funding in the earliest years, are required to set a certain percent of general fund money for the routine restricted maintenance. Because the budget cut, that percentage will drop from 3% to lower, as low as 1%. But however, back to 1516, we are required to maintain this set aside for 3% to, for the purpose of routine restricted maintenance. And also, right now, there's, looks like there's no funding for the school construction, and the governor opened a lot of option and would like, allow the district to have more control for the facility, facility, how to facilitate maintenance, how the funding come around. But I think the state cashed the California School Housing Adequacy Association, they kind of look at a lot of different options to ask the governor to reconsider the need of the school facilities. The other one, as the board already know, that the employee and teachers and classified employee, the pension, district contribution rate are increased. And that increase for next school year combined the classified and certificate, that will cost the district over $300,000. So, now, we'll talk about the folks on two programs.
Connie, wait one second. I'm so sorry.
Okay, no problem.
Currently, what is the district contributing to the CalSTRS and PERS?
You mean dollar amount or percentage?
Both.
Okay, can I get back to you later on? I don't have this on hand right now. Okay, I think the, we increased, originally, the standardized order rate is 8.25, and then this year, if I remember correctly, will probably increase to 8.80. But the level of increase is gradually increase every year, and within the 10 years, the contribution rate almost doubled.
Right, that's the question. That's the reason I'm asking you this question.
Yeah.
Is because on one side, and this is an observation, I want to see if I'm right or wrong.
Okay.
On one side, we get about $1.8 million of unrestricted funds. On 3.3 million, 1.5 has to, is restricted, it has, it's designated where it's going. That leaves 1.8. So, we're not going to get 1.8 unrestricted because in the same breath, as we get down to the bottom, it's mandated that we increase our contribution to the retirement system to the tune of $300,000.
Yes.
So, that takes our 1.5, that takes our 3.3 supposed-looking gift from the government and reducing it down to about 1.5. That's unrestricted.
Yeah, that's correct, and thank you. The other things is the 3%, the 3% contribution increase from 2.5% because 2.5% is the district contributor right now currently. So, by that half percent increase, it costs the district around $370,000. So, just for what your calculation is 1.8, then minus 300 for the retirement contribution will occur next year, then add on additional $370,000 we're required to contribute to the facility, then the actual increase is dropped.
Okay, and then, one more thing. That is, this year, it's $300,000. Next year, because it's a percentage, the number gets larger. So, what is it next year?
Oh, I'm sorry, the $300,000 is next year.
Okay.
This year probably will less because the percentage increase is less, but I will get the number for you later.
Okay, what I want to, I want to, what I would like to see in the future, not at this particular one, I'd like to see, is there will come a time when there's a cross between the money that we're coming in and the money that we're mandated to spend that will break, basically will break us. I want to see where it crosses over, when the money that we're receiving to pay our bills is not enough for what we have to expend on mandated payments. That's what I'd like to see.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, thank you. Any questions so far?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, it's the ROP, next time, I will focus on the two program, one is the ROP program and one is the adult education program. There's a lot of change starting next school year for the ROP program. And the first change is, I want to list first, it's actually the third bulletin, is the news we receive from the Lego before the holiday, because the Monrovia Unified Schools is one of the 23 district Lego consortium about, in the Lego ROP consortium. What that consortium mean is, up to this year, instead of we receive the ROP money from state, actually, Lego receive the money from ROP, and then they manage the program, then they pass the revenue to the 23 school district. For the Monrovia, we receive over a million dollar annually for that program, but Lego basically tell us, you know, they are no longer pass the money to us starting next school year. They have a legitimate reason is because the, under the local control funding formula, for the grade 9 to 12, the state use a different name called Career Tech Education, they add on around $200 per ADA for the funding. So, they have legitimacy that they can stop pass the money to the school district. But the challenge we are facing right now, that the information, we receive a little bit different information before. So, currently, I think our superintendent will work with other 23 school districts, they starting conversation with the Lego superintendent, so most likely, they will reach some agreement. So, we are hopeful that there were good news to come here in this way. So, also, go ahead.
Real quick, just to make sure that we're all clear on what's happening here. So, the county is still receiving funds for ROP?
The county's receive a funding, instead of separate funding, separate funding for ROP purpose, they actually receive a funding as a part of their LCFF base grant.
So, they've rolled, the state has rolled the ROP funding into their base funding?
Yes, just like us. So, basically, starting 1516, the Lego, my understanding, they are no longer receive the funding from the state. If they want to continue funding us, they are going to use their base grant money to funding to us.
But the money, the million dollars we used to get, according to the state's, been rolled into our base level. So, that million and a half we were talking about on the last slide is down even more if we want to keep our ROP, you know, career tech program.
Exactly, that's what I.
But we have the choice of using it for that or using it for all the other state mandates we got.
So, once again, I mean, this is one of those kind of like find the P type of deal, where the state is saying that the funding is still there, but it's not.
Yeah, funding is there, but our costs increase at the same time also.
A million dollars?
Yes, if we still want to keep the program, then the general fund, just as Mr. Hammond mentioned, that the additional money the district receive, then we need to support the program, which we currently will not support.
So, they don't say they're cutting ROP, but if we want to maintain that program, our 1.5 is now down to 500,000, just in roundabout ways.
What we're saying here is, the benevolent folks in the governor's office are not benevolent. They're thieves because they give you with one hand, which was rightfully ours to begin with, and had they hadn't taken what was ours to begin with, we wouldn't be in the position we were in now. And then, they take back, but they don't do it, they make us do it. They make us take it back so that we have to make decisions on what it is that we need to provide our students and our community for education. And then, the costs that we see exceed the amount of money that we got, that we received. But somebody in Sacramento stands up to a microphone and a bunch of TV cameras and said, "Look what I've done for education, I've increased spending," when really, that's not true at all. And the issue that I have is that when this whole presentation started, is we have good news. No, we don't have good news. What we have is the same news as we've always had, which is this hand giveth and this hand taketh away. And then, what it makes is the local school boards, it turns them into the bad guy because then we have to prioritize, which we should always be able to do, but we're going to prioritize with less money than we have now, under this illusion that we just got 1.8 million dollars of unrestricted funds. That's what I was saying to begin with.
Thank you. This just sounds like the gross income and the net income. You can have a $2 million gross income increase, but your net income still can be minus. So, that is kind of similar situation. Okay, thank you. So, currently, our district ROP program provide the classes such as auto shop and fashion merchandise, video production, and photography, and forensic science, and those program and supporting the two, three point half FT teachers, and 10 hourly teachers, and one counselor, one counselor technician, one full-time administrator, and two full-time career support. So, the salary and benefit, including the instruction supply and the service, is up to over a million dollars. So, honestly, we receive over a million dollars funding, and then we spend on the program. Any question?
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you. I think it's the same old song and dance. We get every year from the state, the politicians stand up and say, "Oh, it's good news, we're giving you more money." But they don't stand up and say, "But you have to spend it plus more on things we're going to mandate."
Yeah.
Anyway, you guys do a great.
Anyway, you guys do a great job of putting the budget together and providing an excellent education here, and making all that fit. So, thank you very much.
So next one is adult education program. Adult education program board, as you know that, you witness how the changes, our district adult education program changes, okay? And several years ago, we have a very big adult education program regionally, and starting '08, '09, because of the state budget cut, the state basically say, you know, in order to support the K-2 tour education, and then the funding for the adult education program changed, changed the way is the funding is not based on the ADA anymore. So basically, they say, "We give you money as the same level and '07, '08, but you can use it for any purpose," which mean that we use the word for flex, flex money. So, adult education program is flex to K-2 tour education, and a lot of other school district, because of the budget tied, they basically shut down the whole program. And our school district, we did not do that, and which is, you know, use another way, we keep maintaining the program, but the program get downsized because of the funding limitation. So the state say that for the 1314, for 1415, this two year, there's the MOE requirement, which mean that the district required to spend the same dollar amount of the funding for the adult education program at the tour 13 program. For our district is around $375,000. And the change is starting last year is AB-86. AB-86, basically, the state tried to realign with the program, and first of all, they say, "Okay, why not community college take over the program?" Of course, the community college, they don't have experience that K-2 tour has over the decade to operate adult education program. Then the alternative is we create a consortium, which mean that the K-2 tour school district work with the community college to call the AB-86 consortium program. That what we did here is the four local school district, we team with the citrus college, we created the consortium here, and the Marovia Unified School District become a fiscal agent. And this year, we receive 211,000 dollars as the planning money, and we are looking for more funding come to consortium for next school year. So, the funding is still wait to see what the detail, because it's the planning, so as the board know that, it's take a while for the planning, and then state gave us detailed guideline. So at the meantime, our adult education program did has the, some money is from the federal funding, the federal funding is supporting the EL English as a second language, and general education development, this two program is funded by federal program. And also, we also has a full fee-based program. Fee-based program is mean that the tuition we collect for the program support the operation for the program. And the general fund support, as I mentioned, the $375,000 is supporting the current operation program for, for, for the adult education. So, then once we receive more information, the more information, one information we receive is the, remember the MOE I mentioned earlier? The state say, okay, 1516, the state will give the district one-time MOE money, and just only for that year. So, I contacted the state adult education program, and I was told that it's just governor's proposal. And there's a lot of trailer bill need to come out and finalize this one-time MOE and state funding. So without the detailed concrete guideline, the district in multi-year projection, as well as the second interim reporter, we supported for, we supported board for approval, we will still continue funding the adult education program basically needed, which mean the MOE requirement at $375,000 level, until still, until the state tell us that they do keep their proposal, and give us one-time, one-time money funding for MOE for next year. So that is in my presentation, and if the board has any question, answer the question.
Just to reiterate, I, I, I'm very nervous about where the cost of retirement is, and how, when our funding gets, this, as we pointed out, this is not an increase into the amount of money that we have. But as we have to increase our spending on what retirements that we must pay, I'd like to know what that looks like in the future. I'd like to see five, 10, and 15 years, somewhere in there, this crosses over, and because there's going to be some assumptions made that funding will stay at certain levels for a certain amount of time. And if it doesn't, it would be very, very bad for us, if we're mandated to have these increases that it looks like.
So, what I can do is, I will do two things. The first thing is, in this Friday's update, I will send the information to the board for the, in the next several years, what is the CARPERS, which is Classified Employee Pension Plan, CARSTORS, which is Certified Employee Pension Plan, what is each year's percentage increase? So, I will send the board in my update. The second is, from now, each, every time I present the budget information to the board, I will specify to the board, what is the percentage increase, what is the dollar amount impact?
Thank you.
And, and what we will provide to you is a five-year, 10-year, multi-year projection. And Connie, Ms. Wu, and I will work on that together with Mr. Conway.
Thank you.
Now, it's important to remember, the reason we're having problems is because of the state's five and 10-year projections, and what they think that is an appropriate rate of return. So, the, these projections are, I mean, it's great to see where it is based on, on how we've done today, or where we stand today, but any projections that are made by the state, and their rate of return, are fairly useless. I mean, plain and simple, their track record is pathetic. And just so people understand, it's just not the district that have to come out of pocket to make up their, their shortfall. All of the employees are also having to come out of pocket. So, they're taking out of every pocket they can grab to make up for the deficits that they've created. There are no additional benefits that are, are gained by the students, by the teachers, or by the school districts in the use of these funds. This is only to make up a shortfall based on unrealistic forecasts of what they thought they can get for rates of return. So, you know, their estimates, take it for what they're worth.
And it's, I'm sorry.
It's a just, it's a shift of the burden from the state to the local districts and the teachers, with the staff, with all the staff. And that's what, plain and simple, it's a shift of burden, and they'll stand up there and say, "Oh, we're supporting education, we're giving you money." This is one more thing under the table, that they're, they're cutting education budgets.
The thing that concerns me the most on this is that we are mandated, without the ability to say, "We need to change direction now." Once the mandate is in place, we have to follow through with it until the legislature changes that says we don't. Unfortunately, those don't, they don't happen in real time together. So, our mandate will probably go past the time that Sacramento has decided that they were no longer going to fund. It may take a year or two years before that, the momentum stops from what they mandated till the direction changes. And that's the one that really scares me, because if we have to make huge amount of contributions into retirement systems, that will put a huge hit into our general fund that directly will have an impact on every child's education in this community.
On a better note, the city has been working on some things, and, and cards are starting to line up for a technology and science emphasis in our businesses in the community, and emphasis on science and technology businesses. And it looks like, you know, we may become a, a home for many scientific and technology companies. So we're starting the process to look at our career pathways, and our ROP, what was career, it's career technical now, and our adult education program, to see how we can help align that program to prepare people to fill jobs in this community. And so as we put that all together, it will be just more, more ammunition we have to go and say, "We need to maintain strong career technical programs in this district, and we need to maintain strong adult education program." So, so there's a ray of hope there. It certainly hasn't all come together, but it's, it's something we're working together with the city and the Chamber of Honor, and it's a program that I believe has a lot of potential. Not only to help our funding in ROP and CTE, but to help people in this community get high-paying technical and scientific jobs, so. We'll see how that goes, and keep everyone informed. Thank you for that report, Ms. Wu. Now we're moving on to 7.5, the fencing projects. Are you going to kick that off, Mr. Marchetti?
Yeah, Vince will report to the board about the status.
Okay. Before you report, I think I need to take a motion from the board to authorize commencement of installation replacement, repair of fences at Mayflower and Santa Fe.
So moved. Second.
All right, moved in seconds. Mr. Marchetti, if you would explain what we're, what the proposal is?
The proposal right now on the table is the fencing in the K area, around just that K area on the north side of that building, the west-facing fence, and the east-west fence that goes between the building and the street.
This is at Mayflower?
That's at Mayflower, sorry. That's about $9,000. And the fence at Santa Fe, I've met with my staff out there several times, we've looked at the fence, the integrity of the fence, we're very confident that we can make some repairs on the fence, and paint it, and get at least another five years out of that fence, and push that repair down the road.
And the cost of that?
About $15,000, and that's with in-house forces.
And that gains us five years at least on that, and it continues the concrete fence in good condition, and providing the separation, and the visual separation.
Yes.
At Santa Fe. All right, any questions, discussion?
My only question. On the Santa Fe issue, when it goes back to doing the field there, will it impact the field when we address this in five years?
No. No, because we'll be able to, when we do the fence in, in five years down the road, or however long that is, we can work on that far south side of the campus, and bring them in from the street, bring the contractor from the street. We'd have very minimal damage to the field on that very south portion, and we could repair that as part of a fencing contract to bring that back up to speed.
Appreciate that. And with respect to the fence at Mayflower, did we have the meetings with?
We, we, we did have a community meeting, we met with the site, we had a community meeting, put flyers on the neighbors' doors and porches and those types of things, Dr. Kay did that. We had the medium at 6:30. Nobody showed up, but three people from the PTA. It was myself, Connie, Dr. Shosian, and Dr. Kay, and three ladies from the PTA.
I appreciate the outreach. If no one has a problem, they're not going to be there. It's only if they have a problem, so everything must have been fine. So I appreciate the outreach. Thank you.
With regards to the fence, we're moving forward with the black-colored fence that's favored by the PTA?
Actually, the school would like green.
Oh.
They, I talked with Dr. Kay last week, they liked the green fence better than the black. There was many other choices, but it seemed like the, the black or the green made the most sense to not making it really jump out. So, so we're moving forward, getting the final costs, adding the green screen instead of regular chain link, and I'll have those numbers tomorrow morning.
All right, any more questions, discussion? Just compliments on the observation to transition at the Santa Fe facility. I can see more black tops and all kinds of things done in the future from that savings.
It's about $85,000 savings, and I would like to, I'm going to look at putting that towards black top repairs.
Great.
Can I add a couple things on a side note?
Sure.
We are starting the maintenance and repair of the track at the high school tomorrow. The field will be closed for four days, Thursday through Sunday, and back open Monday morning for use. We posted signs, it's put up on the district's website, that it's being closed for, for the maintenance.
What details is what you call maintenance?
They're going to make the repairs where the turf has come loose, where it's broken away, they're going to completely clean it, and, and restripe it.
Hmm. The track, they're going to re-stripe?
The track.
Not the field?
No, the, the field, I'm working with FieldTurf right now, we purchased maintenance for that at the beginning of the fiscal year, they've already done it once, and I'll have them back out there in the next couple of months to do the deep maintenance on the track, or the field, excuse me.
What does it cost to have the maintenance then on, on that?
The track? The track was right at $14,000.
Um, thank you.
That's something that we need to do every four to five years, and then at 15 to 16 years is when track work could be expensive.
We can agendize that if we need to at some point in time.
I think, Kathy, in the paper that is going out with all the, the school news, I, and I think it's great that it's opened up for the community to use, but the community should know what it costs to use the track. And since this is a cost that's born right out of the general fund for the school district, I think that we should spell that out, that, you know, opening the track up to the community, who owns it, who bought it and paid for it, this is what it costs in upkeep for it, and that it is on a, a maintenance schedule, so that, where this isn't deferred maintenance, I think there's some folks in town that are having an issue with that right now. This isn't deferred, this is right on top of the scheduling, on how it needs to be taken care of, and this is what the cost of it is. Because when we are exacerbating a problem of the useful life of this facility by having more use on it, and it was only going to be so good for so long, and then the more use you get, the more it deteriorates. But I think folks should have a, a right to know what it costs, and then they have an obligation to know what it costs, because then they're going to be asked to backfill that hole at one time to replace it probably faster than they originally thought. But I would like the folks to know that, you know, we are staying on top of this thing and keeping it, so that we as a community are proud of what it is that we, A, purchased, and then proud of what we use.
Any other comments, questions? Ms. Merrickanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vince, appreciate all the work you've done on this.
Yes, sir.
Item 8.3, creation of a new position in adult education, Mr. Jackson?
Yes, as a procedure within the merit system, the Board of Education is requested to establish a new classified position in adult education, based on the results of a thorough desk audit. This is to address the changes of increased duties and responsibilities, and thus it is recommended that the Board of Education create this new classified position under the direction of the Director of Adult Ed and Alternative Programs to perform administrative duties for the adult education program. It should be noted that this position is replacing a current position currently known as the Adult Ed Staff Assistant.
Before I take questions or comments, I really need a motion, and second.
I was just going to make a motion on what he just got to saying.
And I was going to second it.
I heard Mr. Hammond say he moved, and William say second. Okay, now I'll take questions or comments.
The only question I have is, is what is the difference in the salary between the position that currently exists and this new one?
For the year, it's about $3,500.
More questions, comments? Ms. Merrickanda, please take the vote.
Board Member Williams?
Yes.
Board Member Hammond?
Yes.
Board Member Wong?
Yes.
President Gilliland?
Yes.
Motion carries for zero.
Moving on to item 9.1, pending board issues, are there any changes to the, any questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to old business, the next regular board meeting is February 25th. twenty-fifth. We have two meetings in March and two in April that are calendared. Moving into new business, dates to calendar includes, uh, next Monday, the sixteenth, is , uh, President's Day, and all sites are closed that day. Uh, we have several open houses coming up, uh, that aren't on this list, but are on the calendar, and then we have parent-teacher conferences coming up in March, so if you parents are out there, your parent-teacher conference, uh, should be scheduled shortly to happen in March. Uh, March twenty-seventh will be Cesar Chavez Day, and all sites will be closed, and the twenty-seventh, yeah, close of school that day, it will be closed that day, and from then until April third will be spring break. Uh, we're undergoing strategic planning, item eleven point three, show the dates that planning committee will meet. Alex and Rob are the, um, board members on that committee. Those dates are February twenty-fourth, March tenth, March twenty-fourth, and April fourteenth. Uh, happy to report again that this year, Monrovia is hosting a chamber business mixer here at this district office on Thursday, March twelfth, so chamber members and guests are welcome to come over here and have some of the wonderful food our food services prepare, and rub shoulders with some of the business folks in town. Also, Golden Apple Award breakfast, uh, is coming up February twenty-fifth at seven thirty AM at the Santa Anita Golf Course, and we're gonna recognize, uh, Heather Warren, who's done a fabulous job of leading our PTA for several years, and has worked real hard at that. Founder's Days are coming up, several are listed there, and open houses. With that, unless there's any more new business, I will adjourn the regular board meeting, and reconvene the study session at, uh, nine, uh, nineteen, and we will adjourn tonight in memory of two former employees who passed away. One was mentioned by Alex Zuko in her, um, report today, Cheryl Pease, worked for Monrovia Unified School District in the early nineties as a health assistant, two at Monro, and Wild Rose Elementary School, she passed away on January nineteenth, and we want to remember her, and especially all the good work she did for us. Secondly, we want to remember Mary Ann Campbell, and honor her tonight. Mary Ann, our Frau Campbell, as we all called her, was the, the teacher of German at Monrovia High School for many years, from nineteen fifty-eight until her retirement in the year two thousand, that's forty-two years teaching Monrovia youth how to speak German. And, uh, she was committed and dedicated and a great teacher. She continued to teach two periods a day for more than two years after retirement, so that her students would receive the full foreign language credit they needed for college. Uh, Frau Campbell passed away on January twenty-fourth, and a lot of people will miss her, and, uh, many people will remember her as the teachers that pounded German into their heads, and mostly with fond memories, so we adjourned tonight in her memory also. And we will reconvene the study session.